As the only remaining elected officer from the previous board, I will be your acting chair until a new chair is elected. So I will call this meeting to order. And we have some new board members. I'd like to welcome Ashley Anderson, Jacob Hogg, Thomas Pearson, and Maggie Uch to the board. And I believe they have signed their oath of office. Is that correct, Matt?
That is correct. Everything is, all the paperwork is on file and in the district office. So they are all good to go.
So we are good to go.
Welcome, new members.
You are our new members. Thank you for joining us. I would like, everybody's gotten a chance to look at the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to be approved, Jen.
Motion by Rick, second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, do we have anyone here for public input?
I don't believe we do.
Okay.
I have no slips.
Okay, we will go straight to the organization of the board. First order will be the elected chairperson. Do I have any nominations for the chairperson?
I nominate Bruce Vanderpool, second.
Okay, do we have any more nominations for chairperson?
I nominate Thomas Pearson.
Do we have any more nominations for chairperson? If not...
Can I do one more time, Sharon?
One more time?
One more time.
Okay, do I have any more nominations for chairperson? If not, I will...
Do a voice vote.
We will do a voice vote. Nominations are closed. We will do a voice vote. We have Bruce and Tom.
So members voting for Bruce for the position of chairperson should signify by saying aye.
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 Raise your hands.
I was wondering how we heard this.
And members voting for Tom for position of chairperson signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it looks like Bruce is our new chairperson. Congratulations. Thomas Epstein, okay. And as such, welcome our new chairperson, Bruce. And you can take over the meeting, please.
Okay. Get ourselves up here for the moment. So then number two would be the chairperson. We'll recognize nominations for the posi, let's see, no, we're...
Yep.
A clerk.
Yep, clerk.
The chairperson will now recognize nominations for the position of clerk. So do we have any nominations?
I'm gonna nominate Maggie Uch.
A second.
Do we have any other nominations for clerk? Do we have any other nominations for clerk? Hearing no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots.
Make that motion.
Since there's...
Cast a unanimous ballot?
Yes, since there is only one candidate, you can cast unanimous ballot for Maggie for clerk.
Make a motion to cast a unanimous or an unanonymity vote, whatever.
Thank you.
For Maggie.
And a second?
A second.
Is there a second?
From Cheryl.
Second from Cheryl.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next then, we have the treasurer's position, the chairperson. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots. So...
Again, unanimous.
Yeah, we can cast a unanimous ballot.
Correct.
So do I have a motion to...
Shorter motion to...
Motion by Ashley?
Yep.
Second?
A second.
By Cheryl? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carrie. Okay, and vice chairperson. The vice chair, the chairperson will now recognize nominations for the position of vice chairperson.
I nominate Rick.
A nomination for Rick?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Jacob. Do we have any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots. Again, we can entertain a motion for unanimous ballot.
Make motion for unanimous ballot.
We have a motion from Tom.
I'll second that.
A second from Jacob to cast unanimous ballots for vice chairperson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carrie. Number five. Assignment of committees. Now, you kind of told them a little bit about committees previous, so they're not...
Yeah, we've talked about it a little bit. There is an error on the spreadsheet that I did send out. I am missing three committees. So they are on the current list. It's the wellness, facility, no, what would help me, Cheryl? Facilities and equipment, wellness, and transportation. So we can deal with those when we get to the list of open committees. But yes, the new board members, we have reviewed kind of the committee structure and in rough terms as far as what the committees do, how frequently they've met in the past, and how many members typically serve on the committees.
Okay, so if agreeable with everybody, I'm going to start at the top and go right down through sign.
And just so everybody's looking at the same document, if you have your Chromebook and want to look at the first link that has the, it says at the top, ISD 741 School Board Organization/Committee Representatives 2019, I think that's the order in which Bruce will take them.
Okay, so we have the Minnesota State High School League. And this is one, but now I need to clarify, I thought it was one, but I thought we had a substitute there.
We are designating a board member as an individual for this, and this is also our voting board member for any Minnesota State High School League.
Okay.
Rules, regulations, bylaws, any of those changes, this would be the board member that would cast the board's ballot.
I believe it was the athletic committee that had two members on it.
Okay, because I didn't see, there are a couple of them with an alternate on them. So according to my sheet, that Director Tom and Director Maggie were both potentially interested in this one. We don't necessarily have a formal method to follow. We can't do it by that. We've always kind of just done this by open discussion.
Yep.
When do you have a preference there?
I like to do it, I think just my background with the school and athletics already, I just feel I think it'd be a good fit for me.
So Maggie, is that with you?
I agree. Yep, I just put down the things I'm interested in if someone else has...
Yeah, and we all have the same thing, so it just works in an open forum like this. So then Director Tom will be the Minnesota State High School League. Then if we go to the C Committee, Schools for Equity and Education, Rick, you were kind of interested in that one.
I've done that for last year if somebody else wants to do it, but it's like a lot of trips to cities, like Friday. So, and I don't mind doing that, and I'm interested in the legislative part of it, so I would continue unless somebody else is.
Okay, anybody got any other thoughts or a real desire to look at that? Okay, for now, we just leave that with Rick. Is everybody okay with this format?
Yeah.
For like that one, I mean, I don't know about all of these, but for instance, for that one, if someone wanted to go with you, is it something more than one person can go to?
Can we take more than one?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, Schools for Equity and Education is a group that is, I think there's about 40 school districts in the state that are members, and they do some lobbying at the Capitol. But yes, there's nothing to say that we couldn't have more than one board member go down to those meetings. My understanding is Painesville has always just identified a board member as the point person or the point of contact for that organization.
In the past, I have done a couple of ride-alongs to those meetings, and they are very interesting, but I was not the appointed board member.
That's what I mean.
I've done them too.
Okay.
And just, do you guys have an idea what it's about? The metro schools, the state funds the metro schools far better than they fund outstate schools like us, and they're just trying to keep it fair.
Well, it's not necessarily outstate and instate, because there's some schools in the cities that are also C schools.
That's true.
Because it's more, it's more base, what do they call it?
Property wealth is what they're...
Property poor. We're property poor because we don't have a lot of industry here. My kids go to Centennial, my grandkids go to Centennial, they don't have any industry in Centennial. So they're a C school. And there could be a school, you know, outside state that has some really good industry, Albany or some of those.
And where it'll come up is when we do bonds and things, they have a lot more participation from the state on a bond, so they're able to do different things that all of us that aren't in that, in that group.
And C does a lot of lobbying. They're at the Capitol.
They're excellent.
They've got an agenda, and so they're working.
It's a good group.
Okay, so any more questions on that one?
I think we keep everybody informed when there are meetings.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Sterns County Family Services Collaborative. Twice per year, afternoon meetings in September and March. We need one and an alternate, and Cheryl was interested. Do we have anybody that'd like to be an alternate?
I wouldn't mind being an alternate.
Okay.
And that occurs most at the school here, or do you have to travel for that?
No, it's in St. Cloud.
Okay.
Yep.
That works, okay, so we have Ashley as an alternate. Okay, Legislative Liaison, that is one. The committee does not meet regularly. We have three people interested in that one.
I'd be comfortable serving in that. I've done working with the legislature in the past and have a comfortable working relationship with our current governor, so I'd be interested.
Okay, Rick, big deal for you one way or another?
I just put it down.
Ashley, you okay with that?
That's fine.
Jacob, you're it. Okay, and then West Central Education District, that was Lou forever, I think. So it's an open one. Maggie, sounded like you were interested possibly in that one.
Yeah.
That is a very interesting one. Lou always had very good reports on that.
Yes.
So Maggie, you're it.
We should also identify an alternate. That is an actual board seat, so Maggie would be serving on the West Central Ed Board of Directors. They do meet every other month, and it will be critical that if there is a board meeting and for some reason Maggie can't attend, that we do have somebody identified. Since it is a board of directors position, it is something that the West Central Ed District needs to know ahead of time who that alternate is. So if we could identify a second person, that'd be helpful.
Anybody interested?
I would be the alternate for that. I can't foresee Maggie missing it, but...
Okay. Okay, then Cheryl as the alternate. Continuing Education, meets four times a year for one. I see what they have here. You can count me out, I've sat on a bunch of these, so I don't need to be in the mix on that one.
I'm getting endorsement.
Well, I think it's kind of important, actually, if you're looking to the future a little bit, next year, change around. So you get a feel of exactly all the different parts, because those committees teach you a lot more in-depth about different things that are going on. But, so we have Ashley, and Cheryl was interested.
I've been on it for the last two years.
Ashley would work.
It's been very interesting. So if you would like to be on it, Ashley, I'm...
Sure, I actually mentored Community Ed and just was reading fast, but I can do Continuing Ed, that sounds good.
No, that sounds fine.
It meets at 3:20.
Okay.
On those days.
Yep.
Then we have the Committee Education Advisory Committee. Twice per year, usually a lunch meeting, one person needed. Got four of you, I guess just kind of speak up. I think that you're in a, just if I can say that, if it's, maybe we have been on it?
I've been on it.
Maybe?
I just put it down because it is interesting.
Yeah.
So if one of the new, new members would, it's educational.
Want to try it, maybe we'd be okay with that if somebody else tries it that hasn't been there? Okay, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
It's four times a year, but...
Oh.
Oh, okay.
And we meet tomorrow.
Well, I can't move.
Okay, so we have Rick, Maggie, Ashley, just kind of speak up.
I'm still interested because I have kids that are in Community Ed, a lot of Community Ed activities.
Okay, Maggie, you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if she's interested in it, I mean, a lot of these are interesting to you solve.
Okay, world's best workforce. We need three people. I've been on that for quite a long time, and I guess I could see just stepping away, as you can see, I wrote that. But Tom looks like he's interested, Maggie's interested, Cheryl's interested. If that's agreeable, all three of you take that spot?
Okay.
Sound okay?
I just got on it last year, and I wasn't informed of the first meeting, so I only meet one.
It's actually quite interesting.
It is, it is very interesting.
Okay, then...
Bruce, can we, can I jump in here?
Yes, you can.
So this is where I omitted facilities and equipment.
Okay, I saw that on the last page.
Yes, so if we want to talk about facilities and equipment...
So facilities and equipment.
There's been three members in the past, and then you can take it from there.
So the facilities and equipment, I was on that for a number of years, but you're kind of looking after all the things, and what we had done, and I'm sure it's still there, is we had laid out a five-year process of what we had to get done, when we had to get it done. We have stuff that wears out, that they have to buy new, those kind of things. So it's a little more in-depth than the big project that we've talked about in the board. And it has to do with, well, our phone systems will come up in the initial discussions with that, all of that kind of thing.
This is going to be a separate committee from the facility.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a different one, yeah.
This is facilities and equipment. We actually go through what the wants and needs are for the entire district line by line.
Yep.
And discuss each thing with the administration.
And then the administrators are all involved in that. So when they get that meeting, Matt will be there, and then he'll have his people there, so you kind of have an idea. So takers?
I mean, I wouldn't mind serving on that.
Okay, so...
Jacob?
I would come.
I'd also be interested.
And I would like to...
And that was Tom?
I would like to stay on as treasurer, because it gives me a heads up to what to look for in the bills.
Very good idea.
Yeah, that is a really good idea. Okay, then we'll put Cheryl on there, and we got Tom on there. Okay, I think that's probably it, or what do you want?
Can we go to transportation next?
Yeah.
And this is, well, and this is my suggestion. I'm just wondering, we're in a little bit of a different situation, because we don't run our own transportation, we obviously contract out. We do own some vans that, right now, we're running a van route, but aside from that, that's the, the transportation that we are running. The Transportation Committee did meet earlier in the year when we were finishing up the negotiation of the transportation contract. And so my question to the board is, would that Transportation Committee be something that you would just want to slide into the negotiations area? And that then that group would be the group that'd be responsible for continuing that process of renegotiating that transportation contract?
I saw your note on that, and I thought that was a heck of a good idea. I thought, can we move that to administration negotiations? Because there's four negotiation groups, is that where you would put it, or what are you thinking?
It doesn't matter to me.
The air doesn't really work, the maintenance doesn't really work, the teachers really wouldn't work, administration would be the...
That would be fine.
I think I'm inclined to agree with that. I mean, yeah, it seems to make sense to me.
I'm thinking it should be a separate negotiation team.
Oh, yeah, negotiations.
But it should be a separate negotiation team, because it is quite lengthy when we do, go into negotiations with transportation.
Yeah. So if the board is agreeable, I would suggest, let's just throw the Transportation Committee into one of, and identify it as a negotiations committee, is what my...
As a separate committee?
Is what my suggestion would be.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, negotiations just makes sense, I think.
Okay, so then, to continue with what we're doing, we have now hit negotiations on the list here.
Yes, correct.
And then, so we now have five. Okay, so teacher negotiations, we have the list here, has quite a few people on it. I've been on that for a number of years, probably interested in sticking with that at least for one set of negotiations, just personally.
Well, can we set that, usually we have one person to serve on all of them, and that has been you.
Yeah.
Can we agree that you continue to serve on all, or do you prefer?
I make a motion for that. It's an accessory, I don't know.
I kind of left others open, because I don't know where you're at with that. I don't have any trouble sitting on all of them, but at the same time, I, my, just my personal view is I think that the negotiations is a lot of what, most of the money you're going to spend is going to be to these groups. Okay, so we take our $11 million budget, the lion's share is all going there. When I put down the teachers, I thought maybe I'd stick with that one, I maybe stick with administration, administrators, the paraprofessional, and the food service. It would seem like maybe I shouldn't. That's just where I sit. So I would rather not on those, to make room for somebody else to start into it. We didn't always have it set, I don't think, where somebody stuck on all of them. And it's not that I don't want to go, I'm okay with that. I just think that, what do you think?
You don't want to know what I think, Bruce. What I do believe is, just for continuity purposes, if it were left to me, I would make the recommendation that the board chair sit on all the negotiation committees, and then there would be two members that would accompany that board chair on those negotiation committees. Now, that's just what my preference and what my background and experience has been with it. That being said, to have five negotiating groups, and I believe four of those five are all coming up at the same time, that gets to be a large workload. And so it's understandable if, if we can't, but there is some value in having that board chair to provide continuity throughout all the groups. There is some value in that.
I'm okay with it, but what I'd like to do is, maybe we just do it one time, and then we start looking as we go. Somebody's going to be on this for four years, so you're going to go through three negotiations, two negotiations. So maybe we just, if that works with you guys, I'll stay on them the next time through. But then I think it's time for somebody else to move into it, whether it's the chair or not. I started, and now that you said that, I think I started when I was the chairperson, and I just ended up staying on it. But, okay, let's, if it's okay, I will stay on there, but now we need to fill everything else. Is everybody okay with that, if I just stay with them?
Yep.
I better mark that for myself, so I know what I'm doing. Matt will have us on another sheet anyway. Okay, sometime I'll have to figure out how to mark on the computer so I can print that out.
That was, that was my...
I haven't gotten that far.
That was my deal, I didn't give you guys the rights to mark on it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no wonder. I was having trouble too.
Yeah, and I just thought, well, okay, better take a piece of paper on this one. Okay, so teacher negotiations, we had Ashley interested, Jacob interested, Tom interested, and Cheryl interested. So I guess between you, we need to pick two.
I was interested, because I've never been on that one. So I would like to switch from one of the others and switch to teachers if that works with everybody else.
I have no preference, I'm fine with it.
I have no strong in any of the negotiations.
Well, we need one more. So Cheryl's number two, we need three.
Need one more.
So Cheryl would be one, and then I would be one, and...
I can if, if you're going to decide.
Okay, so Jacob, we'll put on there. Okay, then, let's then go to the paraprofessionals. So that one, we have interest by Ashley. Tom or...
I can...
Tom, you'll be okay with that?
I can put my name on that one, too.
Okay, let's put Tom on there. Okay, and then food service.
Put me on something.
Yeah, I don't care what I'm on either, I mean, whatever.
Okay, so I've got Ashley on one, and I've got Tom on one, we have Jacob on one, Cheryl on one. How about food service? Rick and Maggie, interest there?
Sure.
Yep.
We could deal with it.
I was just going to say to get a sample.
Okay, and then how about, we go to administrators, the administration. If I'm on there, I had Tom interested, Jacob, you're on one group, Ashley is on one group, Maggie, you're on one, correct?
No, I'm on one.
I said I'd do any of them, whichever...
I'm really interested in that one.
I'd like to do the administrative one, too.
Okay, so let's do, so if it's Tom and myself and Cheryl, that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Do we have everybody on a negotiation group of some sort?
Yes.
That's the key to this whole thing. So what would...
Can we, we need to do transportation, too, yet.
Oh, yeah, we got transportation, too. Okay, so let's add that now. So now we got transportation. So if I'm going to sit on that, how about, let's see, Cheryl, Rick's only on one, and Jacob's only on one, and Ashley's on one, correct?
Yes.
Am I reading this correct?
I'm only on one.
And Maggie, you're on the only one? So any preferences on the transportation?
Maggie has kids that use transportation.
How about, let's put Rick on it.
Thank you.
Everybody okay if we put Rick on it?
Yep.
I'll take it if no one else wants it. I'm good with that.
Okay, the only thing is that, if we can just talk, is that okay?
Yes.
So three of us have a two-year term left. Three, four of you have a four-year term. I wonder if it would be beneficial to have a four-year term on one? Does that make any sense to anybody?
I'm good with that, if someone's interested.
Someone's going to do it?
I used to love school buses as a kid, so why not?
All right.
Okay, so Jacob, you're...
I'm like, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, man.
No, I just saw Maggie waving her hand, so I just wanted to make sure that, that's fine.
Maggie?
No, that's good.
Okay, so now we have everybody on at least one negotiation of some sort.
Yep.
The transportation negotiation, Matt took over for us last year. That is actually a relatively smooth process. It's not like the other ones. So the key is, in my mind, on the other floor, that everybody sitting here is on one, for sure. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, everybody okay?
Yep.
Then let's move on to meet and confer. Two to four times a year, we got one person, we have Ashley and Maggie. Ashley, you're, I'm just being suggestive here, not to direct anything, but I wonder if that might be one for Maggie?
Yep.
Because you're on the Community Ed and the other one?
Yep.
And any logic to that, you guys? Are you kind of okay with it?
Yep.
Yeah, I have no problem with it at all.
Maggie, you're okay, right? I saw you on there.
Just in the past, we did have two members on that, because quite often, one couldn't make it. Not naming it as an alternate, so if both could show up, they did, but most often, only one made it. Is that a thought?
If somebody else wants to go, I don't, I don't have any issue with that.
If not, the pressure's on you, Maggie.
So should we, Cheryl, do you want to sit as a... So should we, Cheryl, do you want to sit as an alternate?
Sure, I'll sit as an alternate there.
Matt, I hope you're going to just chime in on this thing.
No, you guys are doing wonderful, keep going.
Have you seen something out of play? Okay, Staff Development, this committee consists of Staff Development, monthly during the school year. Quite interesting, but we have Ashley, and Maggie, and Cheryl have expressed interest.
And that's a committee also, in the years that I've been on this board, I've never sat that committee. So I was interested.
Could be a good time to try it, how about you guys, you? Where you at?
I'm going to try to try it.
I got to tell you that, so the Superintendent gets us out a lot of information, we always know when the meetings are coming up, I doubt very much if we'll have a meeting that isn't the week out to be planned, at least. So, it's not like you're not going to get it on your calendar, and that there's going to be all of a sudden an immediate meeting coming up. The only ones that are low rushing for me is if I forgot to put it on my schedule the first time, not because of the district. So, Budget and Finance.
I put on the sheet, excuse me, I'm sorry, I put on the sheet that I thought the Board should at least give some consideration to just doing this work as Board of the Whole. This is stuff that obviously, as we get into Budget season, which we're fast approaching, there will be a significant amount of regularly scheduled Board meeting time that will be designated to talk about specific budget and issues associated with building the budget for the next school year. If the Board feels otherwise, and wants to have a Budget Finance Committee, that is certainly fine as well. I just know that, I think what a lot of traditional Budget Finance Committees have done, I have usually done those with the entire Board at a regular scheduled Board meeting. So, it is really up to the Board as far as how they wish they would proceed.
Bruce, why did you say no?
Did I say no?
Yes, you did.
I will tell you why I said no. Because of, because of my business, the company is never, the company I work with doesn't want me in the financial part of it. As a Board Member, I could do it, as a whole group, but I wasn't supposed to be on a Committee Independent for that.
Oh, so you don't want to be on an independent committee?
No, if it's a whole group, I have no issue with it.
Okay.
But I, they did, when I asked about it before I got on, because I have a lot of stuff with my registered product and everything, they said you can go and do whatever you want to, but stay away from that part of it. Because they don't want anybody to believe that I am passing on some knowledge because of my occupation.
So you're okay with demolishing the Committee?
Yeah, if all seven of us were fine, if it was a Committee, I don't want to be on it, so that's why I put no.
Gotcha.
Good question, nobody ever asked me, but I just always stayed away from it.
Well, I thought you meant you didn't want to expand the Committee.
No, I'd love to be on it, I thought it would be kind of interesting, so if we do it as a whole Board, I don't have any issue with that at all.
It makes sense to me to do it as a whole Board, it's kind of one of the most important things to do as a Board.
I think so.
I don't see any way of doing work in a Committee that we're not going to come back and do again for the entire Board.
Right.
At least, asking Board Members to make a preliminary budget approval, I think it'd be very hard to not have that information front and center firsthand. So, to me, I think it should just be work that should be done at a regular scheduled Board meeting.
I guess I don't have any problem eliminating the Committee, as long as the information is all brought forward, that would have been brought forward in the Committee meeting.
Yep.
As far as that, and the Board should be aware of it all, that's a very important position.
Okay, so that, that we take off. All in agreement on that one? Okay, then District-wide Technology Committee. Very interesting Committee, and Maggie's the only one on there, if it's all okay with everybody, let us pass it on to her, is that okay, Maggie?
Yep.
The Athletic Committee. Tom has suggested interest, isn't that a one person?
I have no idea what the Athletic Committee is, I've not, I've not been involved in a school district that has an Athletic Committee.
It was too.
So, I, the last I looked, I don't know when the last time this Committee has met. I mean, if we want to add to the list of Committees, we can add more Committees, but if they aren't going to meet, I say we just say that we aren't going to have that Committee.
Well, I've never been on it, and it just says it's open and open.
Yeah.
Well, right now.
I've been on it, and in the, in the two years that I was on it, we met once, and it was because there was a problem ongoing, and they wanted the school teachers and Administration and everybody to have input into, so they called the Athletic Committee meeting. But that's all that they did. So I don't really know what that Committee is supposed to do.
So-
Unless that's a Committee that's supposed to oversee hiring of coaches and those types of problems.
Like I said, I'm-
There was never any real description?
Yeah, there's a reason why it's blank, because I don't know, I have looked, I have tried to find out what it does, how often it meets, and I have no information.
Okay, can we next that one? Everybody okay with that? Tom, don't mean to take you out of something you're interested in. A Policy Committee. I'm okay to step away from that, I've been on that for quite a long time, I always found it to be quite interesting. But, interest from Cheryl, Maggie, Tom, Rick, Ashley. Have you been on for more than a couple of years?
Yeah, I was going to say, if, unless you think there should be two pre-existing Board Members on there, I'm willing to step away from that one.
Have you been on it before, Rick?
Just this year.
So you're one year into it.
We, I think we need one existing Board Member, pre-existing that's been through the meetings.
If it's agreeable, we leave Rick on there, is that okay?
Yep.
Sounds good.
And then, we need two of the rest of everybody, so we, so who's got the least Committee so far?
I'm interested in being in this one, I don't know if I have the least, but I, Policy stuff is interesting.
And myself as well.
I haven't been tallying up everybody, I just want to make sure everybody's actively involved somewhere.
I think by my count, it would be helpful with, if Maggie and Thomas were both on there, as far as looking at what people are involved in, and just the sheer quantity, I think that'd be reasonable.
Okay, Ashley?
Maggie?
Maggie and Thomas, yeah.
Maggie and Thomas, is it agreeable with everybody?
Okay.
Okay, Policy, Policy Committee, Policy Committee, you have a meeting on January fourteenth at six PM. So please mark your calendar. January fourteen, six PM, in my office at the Elementary-
Well, that works, because I've got another meeting that night.
I will also send you a calendar reminder too on that.
So then we have the, the, next is the Climate Committee. So, that's a new one for us, relatively.
It's relatively new, my understanding is that was not active in Calendar Year 2018, it will be active in Calendar Year 2019. This is a Committee that I have a feeling is going to meet for sure quarterly, there will probably be some subcommittees doing some work outside of that, once that Committee works, but this will be a Committee that consists of a couple of Board Members, a couple of Administrators, some teachers, staff members, and then parents, and I'm hopeful to recruit some students to be able to participate in this as well. So probably overall, you're looking at a Committee of twelve to fifteen people, and we're going to get going on some school climate culture stuff. It's going to be kind of grassroots as well, and figuring out exactly where that group ends up going is going to be a lot determined by things that come to the group, so, probably four meetings in 2019.
So, we had a, a few of us got together kind of regularly, preceding this. With the State of Minnesota coming out with all the bullying information, we finally have it implemented now in our policy, but it was all bullying, but climate is, that was part of that discussion, and I all talked about setting up a Committee, so that was a regular occurrence where we were looking at it. Are we getting ahead on that thing, are we getting behind on it, what else do we have? Why might not kids be coming to our school? Why might they be happy or not? I think that's kind of what-
Yeah, and I, I think bullying certainly is a topic that is going to be addressed and is going to be discussed within that group, but I would say bullying is just going to be one of probably some other large system-wide topics that we'll be brainstorming some solutions to and stuff. So it is not something that is just going to be bullying, I think there are things going on that, there's a lot of things we can look at and try to address that certainly would impact bullying and things like that, so it'll be a piece, but I would say it's just a piece of the overall kind of mission of what that group's going to be, be working at.
Is that where like the, just mental health awareness?
I think mental health is a huge part of it, yes, absolutely, yep, I think there's going to be some stuff in there, where we'll look at some summer programming, I mean, it's going to be a comprehensive thing, it's, it's, it's going to be larger than, than just bullying, but that certainly will be a component of it.
So I am for sure going to step out of this. Not for any specific reason, but I'm in enough stuff already.
I'm interested in this, and the question is, is it also inclusive of like the culture, just of our school, like creating a culture of curiosity, as we're maybe changing just different approaches that we're looking, you know what I mean, is it, or is it just about the students, or is it about?
No, I, I think, I think ultimately what, what the primary focus of this is going to be, how do we cultivate a school system that honors and recognizes student voice and choice? That to me is, is the overarching of where this is going to start, and all, there's all kinds of subgroups of things that are going to go on, that's as, as a result of that conversation.
I'm interested in participating in this.
I'm very interested in participating in that one also, as a New Committee, and getting it going in the right direction, and finding out where we're going to go with everything. But, do we, do we need just two?
Yeah, I still am, but it looks like there's two people.
Do we need just two Members on that Board?
We can go three.
Let's make it three.
I, I'm okay to make it three.
I'd like to make it three.
And then we'll get, Ashley is on there.
So is it Ashley, Cheryl, and Maggie, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
And then we have one more, Bruce, we have the Wellness Committee.
And then, yeah, we have the Wellness, and that's one person, I actually can't tell you a ton about that Committee.
Wellness is required by state statute, it's a part of Policy Five, I thought I wrote it on the sheet.
Thirty-three.
Five thirty-three, thank you. So it is a requirement to, to honor the state statute that guides Policy Five thirty-three. Interestingly, we are up for our Food Service Review this February, and that Department or Division of the Department of Ed, they also take a look at our Wellness Policy. So, I know for a fact that there will be some Wellness Committee Meetings coming up as we go to the spring of the year, and our Food Service Review is done, that Wellness Committee will be getting back together. Typically, probably two meetings a year.
So-
If nobody else wants it, I'll take it.
Anybody else want to step in, are we all okay? Okay, so we got somebody on every one of the Committees, somebody's on, everybody here is on at least one Negotiations Committee, are we comfortable where we're at, everybody? You guys?
Yep.
Okay. Cheryl, you okay?
I'm good.
Okay, then we are-
No, I'm mad, I want to start over.
Good, you can stay here.
And we are done with that part of it. I see I should have been having my finger, keep going on my keyboard here.
So then, what will happen with the Policy Committee list, we will get it cleaned up tomorrow, and then you'll see it in an email, and then the Policy Committee list for 2019, that will also be in the Drive folder, that is where the School Board agendas reside as well. So, you'll have it electronically, and you'll get an email as well.
And with that one, you already have all the meetings pretty well scheduled through the rest of the year, don't you?
For what?
For the Policy Committee?
The months, yeah, yep, that cycle's set, and so the months are already identified, and we'll continue to follow that.
Okay, so then we're through with the Committee Assignments. So, do we need to have a vote to-
You do, you need to have a motion to approve the Committees.
So can I entertain a motion to approve the Committees?
Someone.
Came up with. A motion by Cheryl, seconded by Rick.
You have to read them all.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Carried. Then, number six, Assignment of Committees, okay, Schedule Regular Meetings. Okay, so, I talked to Matt just briefly about this one earlier, but can Matt, can you talk about that a little bit? We've always been on Tuesday nights, forever, and we used to be at eight o'clock, we moved to six o'clock, I guess if I was to add something here, I think we need to be open as a Board to make sure we're coordinating with everybody's schedules as best we can, but go ahead on the Monday night thing and whatever else.
So, and, and again, these are three options, there's as many options as you want to come up with. So, the real question to me is, does the Board want to continue meeting twice a month? Do you want to meet once a month? Do you want to start your meetings at six o'clock, or would you prefer to start them at a different time? The only concern that I have is, one of the things that is a regular standing agenda item is participation and communication items from Members of the Administrative Team. Tuesdays is very difficult. The school is generally very busy on Tuesday and Thursday evenings, especially in the winter season with all the activities going on. If the Board does expect to hear from our Activities Director and Elementary Principal, they are very heavily involved in coordinating our activities, and so it is very difficult for that to always happen. So if it's a priority for them to be here to be able to do those communication items, I personally would suggest we move to Monday, because of the lighter extracurricular load. If the Board is okay and understands there are other things going on, and those people are busy with other responsibilities and may not be able to attend on a regular basis, obviously Tuesdays work just fine as well. Wednesdays is obviously generally a no meeting, we do have an agreement with the local churches, and so we try to avoid that. Thursdays, in my opinion, is very similar to Tuesdays, and I don't think anyone would suggest meeting on Friday nights. So, that's kind of where things are at, but realistically, the Board has to decide, do you want to meet once or twice a month? Is six o'clock your start time, and then are you talking about meeting on Monday or Tuesday?
So, of all the Boards, how many are meeting once a month?
It's all over the place.
So no real?
I don't think you, you would be able to come up with a consensus, you know, there's, there's Boards that meet twice a month, there's Boards that meet once a month, that's pretty much the, the standard, one of those two. There are Boards that will have, that do meet twice a month, that one of them is a business meeting, and the other one is a work meeting. And so that's, you know, what's unique here is kind of, both of the meetings each month are really more all, they're both a mixture of business and work. And so there are some Boards that do meet twice a month where their first meeting of the month is strictly work only, there's nothing that's ever approved, it's no action, it's information, it's all the work that they're doing on whatever issues are in front of the District, and then the second meeting of the month is their business meeting where they actually have action items and are, are conducting business of the District. There's nothing wrong with meeting twice a month, there's nothing wrong with meeting once a month, it's really what, what works for the Board.
I have a question for the Members who were having it twice a month, do you feel by going to once a month that we would lose value, or things wouldn't go as quickly, or what, what are your thoughts?
I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I, you know, a lot of our meetings, because we've been having, you know, we've been having a lot of problems, we're done by seven o'clock. And, a lot of times, the two meetings are, you know, we have to take two nights out of our month for one thing, and then we have to do a lot of the same thing at both meetings, so, in the one sense, I would say one meeting would be good in that sense. On the other hand, if you miss a meeting, you missed two months. I like what Matt's saying, that if we could kind of say, we're going to have a business meeting, take care of all that stuff one time, because I think a lot of times our meetings, we just don't take time to talk about some of the things that we're, we're into, so, so I kind of like that idea of a business meeting and a work session.
I'm familiar with the, the business meeting and the work session, the school that I attended, Wynden Public Schools, they always have their, I think it was the first of their month is what they did for their regular business meeting, and then their last meeting of the month was their work session, and that worked out really well for them, I think.
And I can see value in that too, I really can, I'm, you know, if, if that's something the Board would like to, to give a try, I, I can see a lot of value in being able to put together and do the business meeting, whether you do it first, whether you do it second, it's, it's indifferent to me, but do the business meeting, and then have your, your second meeting be just strictly a work session, where the Board is going to be taking up the issues that are in front of the Board, and that eventually, whether it be in the short term, or maybe midterm, they're going to have to be making some decisions. And so I, I think that potentially has some, some merit. When you look about what we're talking about doing with Budget and Finance, that certainly plays right into that type of a meeting schedule, where you could very easily have a large portion of that work component be Budget-related, so.
Cheryl, your thoughts, Maggie asked for her opinions.
I'm thinking too that having a work session and a business meeting really sounds like a good idea. Our work sessions, we always get a lot of input and a lot of discussion, and some outright almost arguments, not quite, but, but a lot of disputes over different little topics that we're able to work out, so those are- So those are really, really beneficial as far as I'm concerned. The what I was thinking about, though, is if we go to the Mondays, the second Monday of the month is the meeting of the search and rescue team that we are officers on. And they moved their meeting so that I could be on the school board.
And and we could, I mean, I'm just putting second and fourth Monday on there because that's what we were doing for Tuesdays. I mean, we could say we're going to meet the first and third Monday of of the month.
I just thought I'd mention that. But I like the idea of a work session and a business meeting.
We had second meetings this last year that I was on my way home at twenty after six, six thirty. And it was like, man, you know, yeah, we got some stuff done, but it really wasn't necessary to be there. I like the work session idea.
We did also have to have special meetings where we had to come in, call the meeting to order, vote on one subject and leave.
That's right. Well, we have some of those, but this is the regular scheduled ones that were so short. And so, I don't know. I I don't see it as an issue. I kind of like the idea of the work session one. And maybe if we decide to do that, we try it. And then you guys all analyze it for yourselves. It needs to be a seven member decision. But we would still have the same number of meetings. We would, the work sessions may give us an opportunity to talk. Sometimes we don't have a chance to just talk.
See, I think my biggest fear with just doing one meeting is that you do have to miss that meeting that month. And now you're you're not seeing everyone for another two months in between and and trying to catch up maybe on on topics on your own instead of being able to be involved in a meeting where and and having having those meetings structured, specific businesses, specific, you know, meeting topics is a value there instead of just kind of coming into open to whatever's going on today, two weeks ago.
So if I can, so we have to decide what day of the week, but we also have to decide what time. The school board meetings were always at eight o'clock. A few years ago, we had some board members get on. Eight o'clock didn't work, so we moved it to six. I mean, I'm a little open there. I, some of you that maybe are a little younger have a different schedule, obviously with younger children. Does the time work for you?
I'm open also.
We kind of thought in the evening, so if there were people that wanted to come in the public thing, having it in the middle of the day or something probably is not too workable. But it's timing of six o'clock work.
There's definitely advantages for me, having younger kids. Later is actually a little better. I mean, I work at five thirty next morning, so later is not necessarily better for my work schedule. But but I, you know, raising two little kids and trying to assist them, you know, around the house and get them to bed and whatever else, or taekwondo practice and back. Sometimes later might be a little better for me. But that's also a week to week change.
It'd be a thing.
I think, I mean, my schedule is chaotic. So I think it's hard for me to say which time's going to be better because my kids are going usually four different directions every night. So for me, I mean, I'm just going to make it work. So I think if somebody has a strong, you know, opinion on it, I will support what works best.
Your thoughts, Ashley?
Yeah, I'll make I'll make whatever work. But my preference would be earlier than later. I start turning into a pumpkin really early. Compared to most people, I think. I try and go to bed earlier. I like to get my kids in bed, so myself, so I like to do that.
From my perspective.
That's my, that's just an opinion. I can make whatever work, although first Mondays are, I do have a conflict with that, so sorry.
We're a group of seven, so it has to be something that's workable. And being four of you are here.
I don't.
I don't think it's.
I don't like meetings because it's, you know, does anybody really like sitting in meetings? But I don't think one meeting a month is a good idea right now, at least.
There's so many of us new. Like I would prefer to have some time to learn and discuss.
And that would make for necessarily a longer meeting, which is harder. And we have got so many big things on the docket coming up. I think it's just going to be too much to try and cram into one day.
Well, I think with that work session, that can expand that per discussion for all of us to have a voice to learn, to do that. I think that'd be so helpful rather than just another business meeting.
Yeah, I have no idea what, I mean, I really, really don't understand the difference between a business meeting and a work meeting, but I'm up for it, whatever. Get done certain things one night and certain things the other night. Okay, I'm cool.
Rick and Cheryl, any thoughts?
I like the six o'clock because I like to get home. And still be able to do something at home. But it doesn't really matter to me. It's nice to be able to get done, go to a ballgame if there's one going on.
That's something that did come up. So that was it. And.
Seven thirty concerts.
Yeah. Yeah, and most concerts are Monday nights. They start at seven thirty.
And six o'clock does work for me. I'm like, I'm wide open.
I thought it was weird when I came.
Not an issue.
I thought it was weird, Tom, when we came, when I came on, six o'clock doesn't make sense. But, you know, it works.
Well, we had a period of time where some of the board would just disappear because the kids were playing or there was something going on. And so we kind of moved a little earlier and then somebody had a conflict. And so are we okay with six o'clock?
Yep.
Six o'clock twice a month.
This is, okay, six o'clock twice a month. Now I need to pick the day. And what weeks they are.
Well, I'll just, I would like Mondays over Tuesdays because I like to go to the athletic events and stuff. But but I'm hearing some other things. And before we elected the school board, we were doing it on Tuesdays. Maybe assumptions Tuesday. I'm fine with Tuesday. I hate to move something and then all of a sudden we've got other conflicts. If everybody's already fine with Tuesday, then I would say we stay with Tuesday.
That makes sense to me.
Any other opinions on that?
The concern I would have is that the other people who are attending these meetings, if it's a challenge for them, you know, so.
So far, it doesn't seem to be.
Okay.
But that was a concern of ours when we went from eight to six. We thought that that may be a problem because there was some conversation trying to get it up to like five o'clock. But then it got, we all felt it was a little too early if somebody had to come to for public, so.
Do we do we know typically, are there more events on a Tuesday night for the school? Because I mean, I do tend to participate.
Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursday, when you're talking about Minnesota State High School League activities, Tuesday and Thursday for winter season is packed. And and there's a variety of reasons for that. Winter is when we're offering the most activities for our kids. Fall and spring, we have fewer offerings. And so that's why it's felt in the winter versus not so much in the fall and the the spring. But I think I, you know, what Rick is saying, I can certainly see keeping it at Tuesdays. That that's very workable. I just want the board to understand if the value or the expectation is for those people to be here to do the communication pieces, we need to have a little bit of understanding that they may not necessarily be here as regularly as scheduled, just simply because we have a lot of activities going on and they have some other responsibilities to.
Would an option be, because I thought they're here pretty regularly.
Well, if you guys are saying they're here regularly, then they are. Okay. Then it's my perception that's different than yours.
If they can't be here, can't they just write out a brief report and give it to us in writing? And then?
Yeah.
Because basically, that's what they do. They come, they sit there.
Yep.
You give a report, just end up leaving, ask her questions. But they wouldn't be able to do that, but.
Is there any specific reason if we're going to have two different structured meetings that we, you know, or is anybody opposed to doing a Monday and a Tuesday? A first, the first Tuesday and the third week Monday, where maybe we do our Monday meeting with with our business, with the administrators and what our Tuesday meeting is structured differently? We're not as requiring for them to be here.
Well, and I think also if the board is willing to do or has a desire to go to the one meeting as a work meeting and the other meeting as a business meeting, having them have the flexibility of coming at any point that works for the work meeting also makes some some more built in flexibility with it as well. So.
I do love the consistency of knowing it's every Monday. It's always a Monday, but.
Right.
It's on my calendar, it's on my schedule, it's going to.
I think we'd be better off just keeping it consistent. If we're going to meet, let's just meet on Tuesdays and then it's a consistent calendar.
And I think when we've done the administrators, we had them on the agenda. If we do them in a work session, they don't have to be here at a specific time. Well, sometimes they would be here and we'd be doing other business while they're waiting because they're up on the agenda. But if they could step in and step out, I think that might work.
Absolutely.
Feel better. I would prefer staying always on a Tuesday.
Okay, so so we have six P M. on Tuesday. And can we just keep the second and fourth since that's what the?
I still have a question, though. Okay, sorry. So is the the main reason for staying on a Tuesday because that's just what we've done?
I brought it up because I heard two people say that we already got conflicts on Mondays.
Okay. But I would prefer Mondays, just not the first Monday.
Because I would prefer Mondays to do that.
That's what I was hearing.
So I'm like, I feel like I don't, I don't understand why.
So the third and fourth Mondays. Is there anything to say we can do the third and fourth Mondays?
That'd be kind of back to back. That'd be a little complicated, I think.
I think? I don't know.
I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that it wasn't.
For second.
Because I think there is some preference for some people to go with the Monday that we all just kind of, because there are a lot of, I'm looking at the activity schedule and there are a lot of activities on Tuesdays. And hopefully people go to those things.
I think we can certainly leave it on Tuesday. And with the one asterisk behind it, that I'm hearing what the board would like for a meeting structure would be, the first meeting of the month would be the business meeting. The second meeting of the month would be a work session and working on the current issues that the board is is dealing with. And in that structure, I think we will have some increased flexibility that we'll be able to address the the question that I have of people being able to do their communication pieces with the board that would work better on Mondays. I think if that's the structure the board's talking about, I think I will, I will notice an increased level of participation from them at the board meetings.
Okay, so if we're basically set for Tuesdays, I'm just listening to this, Tuesdays, six o'clock, second and fourth, first one being the business meeting, second one being the work meeting. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
If the business meeting is the second, the first, the second Tuesday, first meeting, can we get the finances? There was a question at one time about the financial reports. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, what's going to end up happening is there's going to be a certain date on that first meeting where it's going to be the bills that are paid up to that point. And just because the board isn't meeting, we're still going to pay our bills. So when you come to the first meeting of the next month, there's going to be some checks that have already been sent out because we don't want to incur late fees. We don't want to incur additional cost surcharges because our bills aren't paid on time. So absolutely, we can still do that. In districts that are having one business meeting and a work session, that is absolutely the structure. Yep.
Right now, all we do is review the bills once a month.
Right.
And if we had the business meeting in the first meeting, we could review the bills for the previous month. And improve them.
Yep.
Everybody ready? Okay, so.
So how are you going to tidy that up in a motion there, Bruce?
Looks like we need a motion to have our regular meetings, the second and fourth Tuesdays at six o'clock, first one being a business meeting, second one being a work session.
I'll make a motion to do exactly what Bruce just said.
Okay, we have a motion from Tom.
I think you have to repeat it word for word.
I can.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carried. Okay, now.
So just can I just revisit one last thing with that? So what will happen again tomorrow is Linda and I will sit down and take that schedule. We'll put it on paper. We'll put it on the school board calendar. All of you will get invites for that. If you want to keep it right on your school account, it'll flow right to it. And then we will deal with the second and fourth Tuesdays that have holidays or something like that or are no meeting dates. We will deal with that and make the appropriate adjustments so that we are having the two meetings per month. Okay?
And is the new board aware that we have two meetings a year that are in the afternoon? Like one o'clock? So we could have students up.
They're fun ones, too.
Yes.
It's not that we get tired of listening to Matt, but the kids are usually very entertaining and have lots of good ideas.
You got more to say, too.
So then number seven, establishment of compensation for board members. Hasn't really moved in a number of years. I did talk to Matt a little bit earlier about that today. The rate for mileage, we talked about just putting that to match IRS. So we don't have to deal with it again.
Is that point five four five, I think?
Is it is it point five five four five or point five four? It's either fifty-four cents or fifty-four and a half. It's one of, I'm not sure exactly which one it is, but.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, there are a lot of, there are a lot of school districts that just established their mileage reimbursement rate is what the IRS sets.
That makes sense.
It's fine.
Anybody got any other ideas there? Okay, so does anybody have any questions about compensation?
Where are we in comparison to local school boards? Just curious if you have any idea.
I have one point of comparison is what I have. You know, I can talk as far as the organizational committee meetings, the forty dollars for those doing full day board business of eighty dollars, half day board business of forty dollars. Those are all very much right in line with what other school districts are doing. Some boards do different monthly rates. Some of them just say this is your annual stipend. And then if you're the board chair, this is the, an additional stipend. So it's kind of all across the board how how school districts have that set up. I don't think this compensation that's on here is out of line in any way. I think it's it's very comparable to to what other districts are doing. Now, does that mean you could go find a district where we are higher than them? Of course. And likewise, I could go find districts that are higher than what we are at.
A few years ago, probably two times ago, we put together a chart to kind of look at it. And we were pretty much in line on most of it.
The current rates we're at right now.
Yeah, it was pretty much in line, but it haven't moved for years.
Yeah.
So but it appears nobody else is moving them either. And if they work for everybody.
We changed the board, the board meeting compensation at one, I first, we first started here.
Yes, we did.
It was forty dollars per meeting.
Yep.
And we changed it to a hundred dollars per month because then if we had extra work sessions, special board meetings, those were covered under that hundred dollars. So we didn't feel that we were gouging the community by having a bunch of extra meetings when something important was coming up. That's why that came about.
Made it simpler, otherwise it hasn't moved very much. If everybody's comfortable, we could entertain a motion to adopt that schedule, compensation schedule.
I move that we adopt the, what it would be called, our stipend for the month or our mileage and.
Compensation.
Compensation package, yeah.
Yep. I have a motion from Jacob, a second by Rick. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carried. And I think we might be just about there. No, we are not. So now we're on the legal counsel. So now we're on the legal counsel. Now we're going to look at you, Matt.
Yes.
You've had some experience with our legal counsel in your time here, we've had some experience with them before.
Yep.
Are you talking about saying with the same group or what do you think?
Yeah, this resolution does not dictate who we use as legal counsel. Obviously, the district has a firm out of St. Cloud that we have used. I would recommend we continue to use that, but I do think there is some value in depending on what the purpose of using legal counsel is, to be able to have flexibility to also go and find legal counsel with the specific expertise that you are looking for. So what this resolution would be doing is just authorizing the school board chairperson and the superintendent to have the right to contact legal counsel as required.
And what's the alternative? What, what's the reason for this?
The reason for it is because things come up that we need legal advice on. I'm not an attorney, our board chair.
So I mean, without this, you'd have to go to the same firm.
No, without this in place, I would be coming back or waiting till a regular board meeting to have the board grant me the authority to contact an attorney on the board's behalf. Or the board chair would be asking.
Is this what's in place now or there's nothing in place now?
No, this is what's in place, it's an annual resolution.
So we're just confirming that.
Yep. Typically, the districts that I've been in. Typically, the districts I've been in, this has been a July activity. So what's going to happen is this will be in place for the next six months and in July, when we do our list of like fourteen reorganizational activities, I'm going to just include this in there so that at the beginning of every school year, it's done.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution.
I have a motion from Rick to accept the resolutions, a second from Ashley. Any further discussion? Now, this is a resolution and so historically, the board has had a vice, a voice vote on resolutions. We've probably told them all about that.
We will have a roll call for it, yes.
So it's a roll call vote and so we have a motion in the, in a second and we'll have the, the call.
Ashley.
Yep.